Good evening. This 33rd meeting of the 73rd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder to members, press, and other members of the public, we're asking that everyone please wear a mask in chambers, as well as be sure to silence your phones and any electronic devices. Joining us today to deliver the invocation this evening is Reverend Roderickus Johnson, Sr. Reverend Johnson is a pastor at Trinity AMI Church. Reverend Johnson, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon. We thank you for this opportunity and to the council for having me. Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we thank you for this opportunity and for this assembly. Thank you for bringing us together one more time. We pray your directions. We pray your guidance. We pray, Father God, that you would lead our president now in this meeting as we cover the agenda. We pray, God, for blessings upon each family that is represented here this evening. And, God, as we conduct the business, we pray, Father God, that it will be for the benefit of all the citizens of Baltimore. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Johnson. Now we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, and to God, indivisible, thirsty and just.
For our showcase this evening, we're joined by Abby Markow, Executive Director of Baltimore Squashwise, and Sakari Green, a student participant. Squashwise is a unique program that combines academic support and mentorship with the sport of squash. Ms. Markow, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. We are here today Sakari Green and myself, Abby Markow. I'm the Executive Director and co-founder at Squashwise, a very unique youth development program in Baltimore City. I'm going to tell you a little bit about our program, and Sakari is going to tell you about his experience in the program. And we have a super exciting opportunity where we are redeveloping the former Greyhound Terminal in Mount Vernon in the 11th District to develop a future home for our program and for the community. Thanks, Matt. So we were founded in 2007. We partner with Baltimore City Youth. We combine squash coaching, which is, squash is a sport, a racket sport similar to racquetball or indoor tennis, and we combine it with a long-term program of mentoring and educational support for students in middle school and high school and even beyond into college and careers. We work year-round, after-school, weekends, summer, delivering a really thriving program where we partner with students to reach their goals. Our students, we have currently about 95 students spanning middle school, high school, and into college. More than 70% of our students reside in West Baltimore neighborhoods. We partner currently with KIP Middle School in West Baltimore, but with the acquisition of the building, in the future, we're going to be able to expand to more students and more schools as well. I'll go to the next slide, please. So we have champions on and off the court. Sakari, in fact, is one of those. He's a two-time essay competition winner at a national essay competition that's hosted by our Squash and Education Alliance. More than 90% of our eighth graders qualify for selective high schools. They go to mostly city schools across the city, 20 different schools. Nearly 95% of our students participate in at least one highly competitive squash tournament a year, and most compete in more than that. And over the years, more than 80% of our students have matriculated to college, and we are starting now for our long-term program to have the pipeline with our college graduates. It's been really exciting to celebrate those successes. Just recently, we competed in the National Individual Squash Championships at the U.S. Squash Headquarters in Philadelphia. Sakari was there, and one of our boys' team actually won first place in their division, so we got to bring home trophies. That's actually a picture of them right there on the screen. So now I'm going to invite Sakari, who's a rising 12th grader at City College, and he's going to share a bit about his experiences.
Good evening. As was said earlier, I'm Sakari, and I'm a two-time essay winner for the S.A. Tournament. And I joined the program in sixth grade, and it was a great program for me personally because of the fact that not only was it a good sport for me to play, it was also great education-wise for me. And since I do love the program and I do love playing squash, it's probably one of my favorite things to do. And this coming year, it will be my sixth year participating in this program, and so I would just recommend that everyone could join. It's really fun, really, and the squash is fun, too. I know I keep repeating myself, but yeah. And in terms of the Greyhound Building, I love the Greyhound Building. I love the idea for it. I love the idea for tutors, and on top of that, we have our own building that we can call our own, and on top of that, we can support the community like that as well. And all of those things together just combine for like a really great program that I really love to participate in.
Next slide, please, Matt. So a little bit more about the building opportunity. We've been hunting for a permanent home for a long time. It was accelerated, the need was accelerated last summer when our longtime partner Meadowmill Athletic Club actually closed its doors permanently due to the economic impact of the pandemic, so it was a very big loss for Squashwise. Our gain was that we identified that the Maryland Center for History and Culture was selling the former Greyhound Terminal building on Howard and Center Streets. It's, there's a picture up there on the screen. It's an iconic art-modern building built in the 40s. Anyone who's lived in Baltimore a long time has memories of this building, has memories of the Howard Street Corridor as a commercial and social hub for the city, and we're so pleased to be a part of its revitalization, not just the building, but also that entire corridor. There's a lot of amazing economic and social development going on there. So not only will we revitalize this historic building, we're also going to expand our program, building our capacity up to about 140 to 150 middle and high school students. We also are going to develop a community hub for squash. So many people have not heard of squash before. Traditionally, in the United States, it's been a highly exclusive sport that's been largely played in country clubs, private schools, and private universities. We really want this building to be a place where we bring squash outside of its traditional settings, not only to our students in Baltimore City schools, but also to neighborhood residents, local institutions. We're going to offer memberships, community nights where people can try the sport, and then really hope to just create, bridge a lot of difference through squash basically across the city. We're going to have six squash courts, three to four classrooms, and a whole education wing, and some community meeting spaces. It's going to be incredible. We're thrilled, so next slide, please. We've brought on our design team, PIKL. They're a really wonderful innovative firm in Baltimore, very aligned with our community-centric vision for the space. These are just some very initial renderings. We're still working hard on the design. We've been involving our entire community, Sakari and his teammates, parents, his mother who's here in the room, our staff, our squash pros in the area, not only in the design of the building, but also in the fundraising for the building. We have a community-centric approach to fundraising and to design. Our goal is to raise $11 million in total, which would include an endowment to continue to keep the program strong in the building. With acquisition of the building, we believe the project will cost around $7.5 to $8 million. We're still refining those numbers. We were thrilled to have a gift from the state's capital budget, which is our first time attempting that and being successful, and we're still working hard to reach that goal so we can make this a reality for Sakari and his teammates. So I want to just thank you for the opportunity and appreciate it.
Thank you, Sakari and Abby, for coming and joining the council tonight. Your presentation was excellent. We look forward to supporting you in the future. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll of members.
President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We will now proceed with adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the May 16th, 2022 proceedings are on the council members' desks.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is now adopted. Communications from the mayor can be found at the beginning on page two of the agenda. Please make a note, there is an executive appointment that has been withdrawn. This can be found on page two of the agenda. We'll now turn to bills to be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first bill.
City Council Bill 22-0242, Charter Amendment Accounts Payable. For the purpose of establishing the Department of Accounts Payable, making the comptroller responsible for the department, specifying that the director shall be appointed by the comptroller, establishing the powers and duties of the department, conforming the duties of the Department of Finance, conforming certain related provisions, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsor, President Mosby on behalf of the comptroller.
This bill has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 22-0243, Charter Amendment Department of Real Estate. For the purpose of establishing the director of the Department of Real Estate as the head of Department of Real Estate, specifying that the director shall be appointed by the comptroller, making certain revisions, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters for the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsor, President Mosby on behalf of the comptroller.
This bill has been assigned to the Rules, no, this bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council.
No, hold on. Let me just get this right. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, this bill has been assigned to Rules and Oversight. Madam Clerk, if you could please go to 244.
City Council Bill 22-0244, City Streets Closing Three 10-Foot Alleyies. For the purpose of condemning and closing, one, a 10-foot alley extending from the northwest side of Virginia Avenue northwesterly 397 feet more or less to the southeast side of Woodland Avenue; two, a 10-foot alley extending from the northeast side of Homer Avenue northeasterly 150 feet more or less to the southwest side of a 10-foot alley; and three, a 10-foot alley extending from the southeast side of Virginia Avenue southwesterly 290.7 feet more or less to the northwest side of a 15-foot alley as shown on a plat numbered 315-A-28A and filed in the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 22-0245, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, 611 North Carey Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit into three dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 611 North Carey Street, Block 113, Lot 44, as outlined and read on the accompanying plat. Sponsor, Bullock.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 22-0246, York Corridor Business Improvement District Establishment. For the purpose of creating a community benefits district to be known as the York Corridor Business Improvement District, specifying the boundaries of the district, creating an authority and providing for its rights, duties, and powers, providing for the selection and composition of the authority's board of directors, providing for an administrator for the authority, mandating the financial responsibilities of the authority and the city in conjunction with the operation of the district, providing for the assessment, collection, and enforcement of a supplemental tax to be collected by and for the authority, specifying the city's role in maintaining and enhancing existing services, encouraging the creation of partnerships among the authority, the city, the state, the federal government, and property owners not subject to the supplemental tax, designating the Board of Estimates as the agency charged with reviewing and approving various matters relating to the district and the authority, providing for the renewal, expiration, termination, and approval of the district and the authority, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the existence, operation, and control of the York Corridor Business Improvement District and Authority. Sponsor, Conway.
This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development. Would you like to speak on behalf of this bill, Mr. Chair? The floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So this bill, of course, endeavors to create a business improvement district on the New York Corridor. The York Corridor is, in many ways, the backbone of Baltimore City. It literally splits the city in half and has had, in many ways, creates a line between my district, and it serves as one of the major business corridors, if not the major business corridor in my district, and previously had an RBDL that is now gone and defunct, and previously had a business association, which is also now gone and defunct. This endeavor revisits the idea of a business improvement district to better bring together those businesses, to bring more foot traffic and commercial traffic to the area. So look forward to getting into the discussion and appreciate any support along the way. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, 247.
City Council Bill 22-0247, Obstructing Street Racing or Stunt Driving. For the purpose of prohibiting the obstruction of public streets under certain circumstances, establishing certain penalties, defining certain terms, and generally relating to obstructing a city street. Sponsor, Schleifer. Porter.
That bill has been assigned to Rules and Oversight. At this point, we will move on to resolutions to be introduced for first reading. You would like to speak on behalf of that bill? Okay, stand up, Mr. Schleifer. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm introducing this bill because of the issue that we're facing all across the city with the stunt driving and car clubs coming from all over to shut down streets and do donuts in the intersections. When this occurs in my district, I get many complaints, mostly from seniors who are being awoken late in the night to these loud sounds that are caused by this. I personally have gone out there on many occasions. I videotaped some of the behavior and then seen what goes on. These clubs run all the red lights. They are actively doing reckless things on their way to and from the intersections that they're closing down. And often, I've also seen that these clubs are coming from even other places. I see a lot of Pennsylvania tags and others involved in this, and so this is an issue that's not going away, and every time I've been out there, there's always been a question on whether or not there can be enforcement action taken, and there's usually modest traffic violations that could sort of be enforced, but there's not enough police to enforce them. And so this bill clearly states that anybody who participates in this behavior, not innocent bystanders who happen to have been walking by, or if you're driving down the street and you're stuck behind this, but those who are actively participating, not only the driver, the passengers in those cars, and explicitly states about doing donuts and some of the other moves that they're doing, what the penalties associated are with that. And so I look forward to a hearing where we can iron out the details. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this bill has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. We'll now move on to resolutions. All right, all right. I see hands raised. So we got Chairman Costello, we got Councilman Torrance, Councilman Glover, Chairman Stokes, Vice President Middleton, Chairman Conway. Is that it? Going once, going twice? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now we will move on to resolutions to be introduced for first reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first resolution.
City Council Resolution 22-0110R, Investigative Hearing Baltimore City as an Abortion Rights Protection Jurisdiction. For the purpose of requesting that the city solicitor and representatives from the Baltimore City Health Department appear before the city council to evaluate if Baltimore City is prepared for an influx of patients seeking to terminate a pregnancy, to identify current barriers to accessing abortion healthcare services, to identify disparities in the ability to access abortion healthcare specifically for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community, and for marginalized racial and ethnic groups, to identify safety concerns abortion healthcare providers have in the present political environment, and explore how to address these concerns, and to specify how the recently passed State Abortion Care Access Act will affect abortion healthcare services in Baltimore City. Sponsor, Middleton, President Mosby, Porter, Cohen, Ramos, Dorsey, Torrance, Bullock, Costello, Burnett, Conway, Stokes, McCray.
At this point, I'll yield the floor to you, madam.
Thank you, Mr. President. At our last council meeting, I would like to recognize sponsors. Porter and Cohen did an immediate adoption resolution on this subject, and I just thought it was now the time to really take a deeper dive into a preparedness conversation for our city. And just noting that, you know, this effort is all about the importance of getting proper healthcare. We know healthcare is very expensive. This will affect all families in some way or another, and I do still believe that, you know, this is a woman's final decision. It's important to understand how high the stakes are, and, you know, I think about, you know, I'm a woman of the 70s, and I'm like standing up here today talking about abortion rights, and it's just amazing how history has been repeating itself in a number of things that we have continued to, that we still continue to fight about. I saw, there was a news report, and I think it was CNN, basically going back in time where back in the day, New York City was the place where women all over would get abortions. And, you know, it just brought to light of, and we got to talk about it. It brought to light all of the abortions that happened in back alleys, women using coat hangers to perform abortions on themselves, and, you know, just death, continual deaths. And that could happen again, and we don't want that to happen in our country or in this city. Baltimore is a welcoming city, and we are surrounded by, you know, our metropolitan counties. We are surrounded near some, or we are near some conservative states like Virginia, West Virginia. It was quoted that one in four women will have an abortion by age 45 in America. Just think of that. One in four women will have an abortion by age 45. So this is a serious conversation that we really have to have, and we want to make sure that our city health department is prepared for this topic, and we just, we just need to be prepared. So I want to thank you all for signing on to this important resolution.
I see the hand raised of Councilman Glover. Yes, as a co-sponsor. Any additional hands? Again, Madam Vice President, thank you for the leadership on this issue. This resolution has been assigned to the Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. Madam Clerk, please read 111R.
City Council Resolution 22-0111R, Informational Hearing Addressing Youth Violence in Baltimore City. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Police Commissioner, the state's attorney for Baltimore City, the chief academic officer of the Baltimore City Public School System, the deputy commissioner of youth wellness and community health from the Baltimore City Health Department, the chief of police for the Baltimore City School Police, the director of the mayor's office of neighborhood safety and engagement, the director of the mayor's office of children and family success, the director of the mayor's office of employment development, the director of the mayor's office of African-American male engagement, the director of the mayor's office of performance and innovation, and interested members of the Baltimore City Youth Commission to come before the city council to discuss the increase in youth violence across the city and the risk factors that are driving these incidents. Sponsor, Stokes, Bullock, Porter, Middleton, Conway, Ramos.
At this time, I'll yield the floor to you, Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We know across this city, there's a lot of youth violence going on in the city, and I wanted to hold this hearing and invite these agencies here, one, to make sure they are sharing information, they're talking to each other, but come before the city council to talk about the risk factors that are driving the incidents here in Baltimore City, and we know that the youth violence is not just in one district, it's throughout the whole city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This resolution has been assigned to, I'm sorry. Please add Chairman Costello, Councilman Glover, Councilman Torrance, Councilman Cohen. Any additional? Thank you. This resolution has been assigned to Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee. Madam Clerk, 22-112R.
City Council Resolution 22-0112R, Informational Hearing Funding for Eliminating Food Insecurity in Baltimore City. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Baltimore City Health Department, and the Department of Planning to brief the city council regarding funding for the elimination of food insecurity in Baltimore City. Sponsor, Stokes, Porter, Middleton, Conway, Ramos, McCray.
At this time, I'll yield the floor to you, Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We know that we have food deserts throughout the city, especially in poor black and brown neighborhoods. There, I have two community associations in my district that deliver food two days a week through Broadway East, Dolly Park, South Flitton Park, Oliver, Berea, and unfortunately, the money, the food was stopped on Tuesday, but we know that, I mentioned it at a hearing, a budget hearing about the funding for that, and I want to thank the mayor for putting that $11 million back to the city planning department. But the idea of the hearing, to look at the funding, how it's distributed, because I have communities that have been doing this two days a week for two years, and I think their food should be delivered in a location in the community where the community residents can come right in a location to pick the food up, instead of a community association renting a U-Haul truck two days a week, paying for gas, and then paying another gentleman, gentleman, Mr. Earl Madison, to use his van to pay for gas. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I see the hand raised of Councilman Torrance, Councilman Glover, Councilman Burnett. Any additional co-sponsors? Thank you again. Again, this resolution has been assigned to Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee. You can find the consent calendar in Section A. At the back of the agenda is their motion to approve the consent calendar.
It's been moved.
And probably second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The consent calendar is approved. Members, please remember to use your microphones when you are speaking or speak loud. We will now move bills on second reader. Before we do so, I'd like to, I'd like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without any objection, we will be on short titles for the duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are on short titles. First committee will be Economic Community Development. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the bill.
Council Bill 22-0197, RPP Area 31, Towns of the Terraces, Revisions.
I would like to recognize the chairwoman of the committee, as well as the vice president of the city council, Ms. Sharon Green Milton. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number 22-0197 was, this bill was heard on May 17th, 2022. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill is approved. Madam Clerk, 22-202.
Council Bill 22-0202, Residential Permit Parking Program, Fells Point Area Amendment.
At this time, I'd like to recognize the chair of the committee. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Bill number 22-0202 was heard on May 17th, 2022. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
Council Resolution 22-0094R, Approval for the Exchange of a Class 87 License to a Class A7 License for Use at 1807-1811 Baker Street, 21217.
I'll yield the floor to you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. And Bill number 22-0094R was also heard on May 17th, 2022, and I move that bill as favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this resolution is now adopted. On to Education, Workforce, and Youth. Madam Clerk.
Council Bill 22-0222, Fire and Police Employees Retirement System Technical Amendments.
Like to yield, I would like to recognize the chair of the committee, Chairman Stokes. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we start, I'd like to thank Councilman Bullock, who chaired this meeting. I appreciate it. The committee held a hearing on Wednesday, June 9th, 2022. There's amendment on the councilman member's desk. It's technical in nature. I move the amendment.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This is, we'll move on to second reading. Madam Clerk?
No, I moved the amendment.
I'm sorry. That was the amendment, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so the amendments are adopted. The floor is back to you, Mr. Chair.
I moved the bill favorably for the amendment.
It's been moved and probably second. The bill has amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Actually, Madam Clerk, if you could please call roll. Oh, you have to suspend the rules. I'm sorry about that.
I'd like to invoke Council Rule 12-1 to advance Bill 22-0222 on the same day from second and third reader.
Now we're heating up. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and probably second. All those in favor of invoking Council Rule 12-1, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. Having been properly moved, seconded, the clerk will now have to take roll call.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton.
Aye.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Yes.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter. Costello.
Aye.
Stokes.
Aye.
Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
The ayes have it, this bill will move on to third reading today.[1789.03] At this point, I would like to recognize the chair of the committee, Chairman Costello. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee held a hearing on May third. I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill is approved and will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty-two dash zero two four zero, sale of property, seven eleven North Arlington Avenue, block one oh four, portion of lot sixty-two.
The body would like to recognize the chair of the committee. Chairs, the floor is yours, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee held a hearing on this bill on May third. I move the bill favorably.
It's been moved. Is it a second? It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The bill is approved and will be printed for third reading. We will now turn to third reading required for the invocation, invocation of Council Rule twelve dash one for same-day advancement from second to third reading. At this point, Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the bill.
Council Bill twenty-two dash zero two two two, fire and police employees retirement system, technical amendments. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. We will now turn to bills on third reading for final passage. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the first bill.
Twenty-one dash zero zero four seven, charter amendment, Dante Barksdale Career Technology Apprenticeship Fund. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
Twenty-one dash zero zero nine four, public safety apprenticeship program establishment, the Hometown Heroes Act. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to twenty-two dash one nine one, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-two dash zero one nine one, homeless shelters and transitional housing units, human trafficking notice requirements. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Now to twenty-two dash one nine three, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-two dash zero one nine three, real property tax credit for energy conservation devices. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. The last and final bill, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-two dash zero two zero nine, sale of property, six twenty North Caroline Street. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Before we move on, I'd like to recognize Councilman Bullock.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We have been in communicate, first of all, I want to thank your colleagues for supporting the Solar Panel bill. But we have been in communication with legislative reference around a floor amendment regarding the time. I don't believe that got to folks for the, for nine months from date of passage. Just wanted to make that note.
Did we add that in during second reading, or?
It was supposed to go for third reader.
Do you know this amendment?
Do you have the amendment, Mr. Councilman?
I don't have it physically.
Amendment that was offered up by the administration? At this point, thank you, Councilmen, just for putting it on the record. If we need to bring it back, we'll bring it back. At this point, we're going to proceed. Members, the clearing of the bill status can be found on page eight of the agenda. If you see an ordinance or resolution that lists a bill that you would like to keep in committee, please notify Natwana Austin before June twenty-seventh. At this point, we're going to move on to committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee call, please proceed with your committee announcements. First up is ECD. Thank you, Madam Vice President. Next, Education, Workforce, and Youth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Education, Workforce, and Youth will hold a hearing Thursday, July the seventeenth at five P M. On Bill Resolution twenty-two dash zero one zero seven R, Information Hearing on School Safety. I move to suspend the rules ten two and ten three, three, to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
The Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, July the seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, at five oh one P M. on addressing youth violence in Baltimore City.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Next up, Health, Environment, and Technology. Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, Public Safety, Government Operations.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations has one meeting to announce, Bill twenty-one dash zero zero five zero, burglar alarms, registration and regulation, false alarms, for Wednesday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, at one oh one P M. in council chambers. And that's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, Rules and Legislative Oversight. And then last, but certainly not least, Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, June twenty-eighth, ten A M. in chambers. Council Bill twenty-two dash zero two three zero, bond issue, public infrastructure loan in the amount of seventy-two million dollars. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, June twenty-eighth, at ten oh one A M. Council Bill twenty-two dash zero two three one, bond issue, community economic development loan in the amount of thirty-six million dollars. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on June twenty-eighth, at ten oh two A M. Council Bill twenty-two dash zero two three two, bond issue, school loan in the amount of thirty-eight million dollars. And Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, June twenty-eighth, at ten oh three A M. On Council Bill twenty-two dash zero two three three, bond issue, affordable housing loan in the amount of fourteen million dollars. In addition, Mr. President, Ways and Means Committee will continue FY twenty twenty-three budget hearings tomorrow at ten A M. We will be reconvening. This is Council Bill twenty-two dash zero two three five, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three. We will have Baltimore Office of Promotion in the Arts, or BOPA, at ten A M. tomorrow. In addition, working with your office to reschedule a time for the sheriff. Other than that, that will hopefully wrap up budget hearings. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we're going to move on to regular announcements. There's one correction in today's agenda. Twenty-two dash zero one one two R is assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology. Again, that's twenty-two dash zero one one two R is assigned to Chairwoman McCray's Committee, Health, Environment, and Technology. At this point, are there any additional regular announcements? I see the hand raised of the gentleman from First District. Go on, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. In twenty nineteen, Destiny Harrison was tragically murdered in her beauty salon. She was a beautician, she was a mother, she was an entrepreneur. She did everything that we hope our young people in Baltimore will do. Tragically, she was shot down in front of her child in her barber shop. As a result, and inspired by her life and her untimely death, Healing City Baltimore, in partnership with her family, created a scholarship to honor her legacy. It is the Destiny's Dream Scholarship, and it supports other young women that want to become cosmetologists and beauticians like she was. Tomorrow at one P M. at Mirvo, we will unveil forty new scholarship winners. The outpouring of support from community on this has been tremendous. And again, we hope to really honor the legacy that Destiny left behind, and would invite anyone to join and support our young people tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for your leadership on that, Chair, Councilman Cohen. Any additional No additional announcements. At this point, I would like to recognize the Vice President, Sharon Green Middleton, to close us out.
Thank you, Mr. President. Due to the holiday on Monday, June twentieth, we will be having the next council meeting on Tuesday, June twenty-first, at five P M. here in council chambers. And may we have a moment of silence for now, the one hundred and fifty-two homicides year-to-date, and also prayers to the families that continue to suffer from the opioid epidemic
Thank you. There being no new business before the desk, this concludes the thirty-third meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we love you.